Minute, coffee can.
Yep. Here's.
We're on? All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is, it's 4:56. Oh, yeah, it is 5:00. My, my Fitbit didn't work. All right. Okay, it is 5:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's August 25th. This is a special meeting. We do have a full quorum. All of our council members are present. Number one on the agenda is considered for discussion, action purchase of a used dump truck for Public Works Department. And that one we are going to eliminate because the truck that we were looking at, David really got a bad feeling about it because they, anyway, he feels like it's something that we'd have to do a lot of repairs on. So we'll go on to item number two. Considered as session action purchase of the sweeper broom for Bobcat Skid steer. I put on everybody's place, I put down the estimated cost of this. The, the broom attachment, he got, he got a call just shortly before he came in here and it's $6,600 for everything. That's out of, that's Dodge it out of Houston, it's a John Deere dealer, and the total cost is $6,600. Do I hear a motion to approve the purchase of the broom for the Bobcat?
Make that motion.
I'll second. Okay, any questions or discussion? We talked about this kind of at the meeting the other day. David kind of explained what the idea was. We certainly have a lot of debris on the roads, pine needles building up and whatever, so he wants to have this.
There's a line item one here about the, the maintenance or the bristle broom replacement. Average about one and a half to two years, 800, 1,200 bucks.
Right.
Seconded, has it been seconded?
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or?
Comes out of the capital purchase budget?
Yes, we have, we have a balance right now at about 53,000. I was thinking it was 66, but it was mistaken in our calculation. So it's 53,000 we have right now in there, and that's where this would be taken out of. Any other questions?
Is CD going to write that number in for our September meeting?
Oh, yeah.
The budget?
Yeah.
Is that what kind of misleading the other night?
Well, we realized that we had made a mistake in calculation because I had asked CD how much we had, what kind of balance we had in there, and we got a figure kind of reversed. That's what happened. So, anyway, yeah, that'll be corrected. But at least right now we know what the, what the true amount is in there. It's 53,000 and change.
500.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the next thing, he doesn't have an exact figure. It's considered for discussion, action, the purchase of conveyor system for dump truck. He explained what that was about last time. Does anybody have any questions about what that is? It's something you attach in the back of the dump truck and it distributes material along the edge of the road. So like when we had to do the edges back in the back, they were doing it manually. But this can be attached and it just goes, you can just drive slowly along and it does it without man, without near as much manual labor and saves time and money.
Huge efficiency.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Now, he hasn't gotten the, the exact, he's gotten prices from 6,119 to 7,199, and it, and it is going to include, well, it doesn't include shipping. Their shipping will be additional. I asked him if he had any idea what the shipping cost would be, and he really doesn't. One of them is out of Lubbock, I want to say, and I can't remember where the other one is out of. But there will be some shipping cost to that. So this is the closest we can get as, in an estimate right now. Do I have a motion to purch, to move forward with the purchase of this cross conveyor?
I'll make the motion that we purchase the conveyor system.
Okay, we got a motion and a second now. Any further questions or discussion? Like I say, it would be maximum 7,199 plus shipping. It could be as low as 6,119 plus shipping, but it'd be within that price range.
Any idea how much shipping would be?
I asked him and he, he didn't know.
It's pretty heavy.
I know.
It'd be shipped by truck. David, y'all get stuff shipped, don't you?
Yeah, I mean, you can get a vehicle shipped from California for under $1,000, so.
Okay, so, shouldn't be a big deal then.
Couple hundred bucks maybe, Lubbock.
Yeah. So, any other questions about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, number four is considered for discussion, action auditing firm for the fiscal year 2022. We, we went out for bids for this. We didn't get a lot of response. We got two responses, correct, CD? And we sent the, we sent emails out to one, let's see, like six different companies, right? And, hmm? Five, and we only got two responses. And the, the copies of the, the estimates are here. Have you spoken to either one of these companies, CD?
The Sidell Schroder bid, that was actually developed through a contact from the current auditor that's transitioning over to become our accounting service. And that, that turned out to be the, the highest bid that came in. They're based out of Brenham, and I'm guessing they're factoring in that they'll probably have to spend a night, at least one night. If it works out to anything like what our current auditing firm has been over two days working in-house, and that's just part of the audit. They want their hands on and see how we manage and handle financial documents and keep the records. So I'm guessing that that has driven some of the price up on, on theirs. Plus, they also indicated that if a single audit would be required, they have an additional fee of 7,000 to 7,500 above their base fee for the audit, which puts them really well above what the other auditing firm came in at. And I sent a, an email to Daniel, okay, can't remember his name, last name. We're already on a first name basis. But that, that B, fee that they've estimated for 65 to 85 hours would be at $16,000. So that could be a little bit on the low side. It could be above.
Did you tell them there's going to be a single audit?
Yes, I wanted to clarify that because Mr. Heinemann, Davis Heinemann and Company, said he didn't see anything, and I hadn't seen it either, so that's what the text was. And this is their, their fee. What they're estimating at, based on that 65 to 85 hours. And the reason that there's a, a range of hours in there is because they don't know how much our accounting firm, which will be Davis Heinemann and Company, will provide them with reports before they have to come to Ivanhoe and do their hands-on stuff.
What if they go over 85 hours? Is there going to be a cost?
If they go over 85, they're going to have to submit an estimate to the council for approval on that. Because what, what the council would be approving is what they have listed here. This is.
And that's anywhere from 65 to 85 hours if they spend, if they.
Correct.
60, 60 hours, it's still 16,000, right?
So even if we get them the information they need in advance before coming here, whatever hours they spend there will be accrued towards the total, right?
Correct.
So it really, I mean, all it would do is give them a head start before they get here.
And that's the, that's the intent from Davis Heinemann, that they will feed all of the reports that they have developed for us so that they can be worked into the audit before they show up here. And that way, it's limited as time that they're spending in-house with us.
CD, do we have any indication from either of these firms what their hourly rates actually are? Because both of these are estimated, one provides an hour range, one doesn't, but both of them are estimates. And, you know, depending on what their hourly rates are, the actual total figure that they've put forward may not really be representative of what we see in the end.
So the question is, do they have an hourly rate?
Yeah.
It did not show up in the full packet, which I emailed to the council for review back on the 2nd of the, of August.
They don't usually have an hourly rate. We never did with David, Davis Heinemann.
No.
It was, they, they.
It was pretty much, yeah.
And our current auditor, its costs, what's their fee right now for our current auditor?
It's about sim, it was similar, wasn't it?
Yeah, because we had some additional expenses in getting those reports changed from QuickBooks Pro, uh, over online to QuickBooks Desktop, it added $2,500 to it. So it's somewhere close to that, 16,000.
Well, I looked at both of these proposals. Sidell Schroder, they didn't have any hours in there at all. And the person that was going to head up our audit had 10 years' experience. And then on Harrington, they're out of Lufkin, they didn't have anything for a single audit, but the person doing our audit had 15 years of experience. And then it had somebody that was going to back him up, but they didn't have anything for years of experience on that. So you get a more experience from out of Harrington, and the cost was a little bit reduced. But then, what about going, years going forward? Is their cost going to go up?
They didn't say anything about that. We've seen a continuing growth of, of our audits.
Increasing costs.
Expenses since we began. And I'm guessing that as long as we have that single audit in here, we're going to see a higher amount than it might be reduced if we, when we pass that, that threshold of When we drop below that rather than passing it, that's where the single audit is required.
You did say that you, when you spoke to the people at Gulf and Harrington, they do understand that it's a single audit?
Yes.
And they're still giving us the 16,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was another thing that was in these two proposals. Harrington was going to sort of all the transition cost to switch over. But Schroder didn't mention anything about that, about taking on for transitioning over if there's a cost for that, if that's just included in their price. But they did include, for years after, that they're, they would go up considerably on an audit. And also Harrington provided a timeline of how the audit would go. I thought that was valuable in the back and part of the proposal.
Yep. That's important for us, too. Okay, do I hear a motion to go with either one of these based on what we've looked at?
I'll make a motion we go to Harrington for our.
Gulf and Harrington.
Gulf and Harrington for our audit.
We don't want them to think we're having David over here, do they?
I'll second that.
I second.
You heard it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I fell asleep for a moment there. I'm sorry.
Sorry, can you get the?
All right, any further questions or discussions on this? Do I hear, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Number five is something, it's considered for discussion, action amendment to employee handbook paid time off policy. John noticed something after the meeting the other day, and he'd like to explain what he was, what he discovered.
Yeah, what I discovered, and we talked about part-time employees, whether it be 32 or 20 hours work week, but we didn't even talk about a consider full-time employees, which we have two of them. So I presented a full-time PTO to Kathy to take a look at it, and then for us to look at tonight.
Did you have a chance to look at that? It's basically the same type, type of thing that we.
The only comment that I have is that at some point, the number of vacation hours needs to, to stop or cap out, whether it's four weeks, five weeks.
So you saying if we have an employee that's here for 15 years or 20 years, now, you know?
I haven't picked the, the number of years. I've just said that at some point, there needs to be a cap.
Right, I agree with that.
Well, what I, what I did put on both of them, I think, was, you know, one week for every additional five years' work. So at that time, that's, you know, that would only give them additional a week, not a week and some wiggle room there. But I don't know if I answered your question or not, but I mean, that's, and I guess it's open for this, well, not open to discussion yet, but I mean, we can, we can discuss and make revisions or whatever.
I just threw it out there as, you know, I worked for a multi-billion dollar company that, you know, after 20 years, after 15 years, you had four weeks. After 20, you got five, and then after that, they changed it back to four. You know, so you topped out at, at four, four weeks. I was grandfathered in at five, and maybe why they walked me out. Too much time off.
Right.
But you see where I'm going with it. It just, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it either way. I just threw it out there as a point of discussion, that's all.
I would also note, the, the way this is detailed, this could be me just splitting hairs, but calendar years two through five, just for example, the, the part-time employees up top, calendar years two through five, 88 hours, calendar years five through 10, 128 hours, showing an additional week. It might be clearer to say more than two and less than five. Because at what point in year five, right, when you see two through five, if you have five years, you're including that in the lower subset, two years through five years. Does that make good sense for clarification?
I believe so.
Does year five belong in two through five or five through 10?
Right.
So less than, more than two, less than five would be 88, and more than five, but less than 10 would be 128. Again, not trying to split hairs, it's just one of those things, we'll have to decide and specify, you know, on the anniversary date that you complete five years is when you get your next level up of, of time, correct?
Well, you, you've missed a lot of the discussion on this topic. So, you know, we've talked about using the calendar year, we talked about using the fiscal year, we talked about using the anniversary date.
Fair enough. I withdraw.
No, 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 I, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, that that's been kicked around a lot already, and I can't, and I don't.
I'm not trying to belabor the point, it's just, when, when I look at it right off the bat, I question how, how an employee would determine.
Yeah, if we can't explain it, they're not going to be able to understand it.
Right.
I've got a question. So if you're here five years, you get 88 hours, right? So does that mean that you, on years, your sixth year, you get additional week?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
All right, so you're here five years, you get 88 hours. So on your sixth year, do you get an additional week?
Looks like you go up to 128 in your back.
Which one are you looking at?
Well, I'm looking right here at the first one because they both say the same thing. You get one week for every additional five years' work. Is that included in the total of 128 hours?
Well, it was an additional week plus, because we're saying 40 hours, so it's additional week plus eight hours.
Which would make it 128 plus 40 hours is the 168 hours.
Well, I have another question here. 48 hours, 32 hours a week is a week and a half. Should be six days, I guess.
Yeah, it's in the days, yeah, for us.
Yeah, but it's 48 hours.
Right, because we have 32-hour weeks.
Yeah, but that's more than we, that's more than a week.
Right, right. We decided to give, you know, personal time off, additional time.
We should quit using weeks and say 32 hours. Because week is, is not.
It's contradictory.
It's, it's a confusion to me. A week is five days to me. Their week is four days, so that's why it's 32 hours. As long as I understand that.
The 32 hours are not.
Their week is 32 hours.
How many, you say four days? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, their week is 32 hours.
Yeah, 48 is six days.
So I guess, back up a little bit, when you say cap, what, I mean, what are we talking about? How much are we talking about?
Well, at some point, I mean, you know.
Cap it for.
128 hours or 168 hours, whatever, whatever you know, number is decided upon, we should say that's the, you know, once you reach that, you've reached the limit of, of, of our gratitude in time off.
Was it cap at four?
Yeah, I don't know, I've never heard of any company being unlimited. You know, there's always a cutoff at some point.
Somewhere.
With HPD, it was 22, 22 days, whatever that worked out to be.
Well, 168 hours divided by a 32-hour work week is five and a quarter weeks.
Yeah, that's a lot.
So.
But there's also the possibility that they go to four 10s, which would be 40 hours a week.
We can't go to that?
But that's, that's under part-time employees, which would be limited to 32, correct?
32 out of 20.
Right.
Then they go over to the 40-hour work week there on the second page.
Well, let's finish with this one first, because I'm still confused. Are we talking 48 hours for the first, after the first calendar year?
That would be an extra.
16 hours.
It's six days instead of, instead of four. Well, I mean, that's fine with me, as long as I understand it. Sorry. Yeah, that's right, it's all included.
Yeah, they're all personal time off now. There's no vacation, no.
I just want to be sure that we're, we're.
Right, that's what, that's what.
So I understand it. Okay, so these hours, everything here is working for 32, okay. Fine with me.
Okay, so.
So we're going to knock it off at 168 and say that's, that's the max?
I would think it, 128.
Okay, 120 is fine with me. I'm not working.
That's like, like four weeks.
That's quite a bit.
That's pretty generous.
Yeah, four weeks, I mean, I think we should cap, of course, I don't have a vote, so I'll shut up.
Okay, so.
But if you're here five, five to 10 years, it's 128 hours.
Yeah.
Period.
Period, yeah.
So once you're here five, five years, you get four weeks vacation?
Yeah.
That's what it says.
And then you're maxed out.
That's a lot. That seems, that's an awful lot for five years. That seems early for five.
That's early. But I didn't write the policy.
Well, with HPD, with the city, usually it was 15 years. No, yeah, 15 years. Three weeks for 15 years, then you started going up, up to 22.
Yeah, we got, we got a third week at 10, a fourth at 15, a fifth at 20, and then they went back and said, no, we're going to just stop it at four.
Yeah, four weeks is, that's a good amount of vacation.
It's, it's hard to take.
Yeah, well, and, and sick days are included in there, too, but still.
Well, it's all one, it's all PTO.
That's right.
Right, you know, it's vacation, sick.
Well, the only, the only advantage, if you're sick, you have, you can get it off within one day. Otherwise, you've got to have a 30-day notice.
Years.
I guess unless it's emergency.
Years two through 10, you get 88 hours, and 10 years beyond, you get 128.
Yeah.
So it would be years two through 10?
Through 10, you get 88. On the third, on the part-time.
And then 10 and above, you get 128.
So two through five, is now two through 10?
I mean, I'm just throwing a number out there.
No, that makes sense, huh?
Yeah.
So what?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to throw a wrench in the thing, I'm just.
No, it's a good point.
No, it's a good point, because that, it gets crazy. Yeah, especially after five years, you get four weeks, that's a lot. So what yours, what we're suggesting is two through 10?
10.
Does that work for everybody?
It's 88 hours, and then at 10 years, you get 128?
Period, done.
Okay.
10 and over. Two through 10, 88. Yeah. And then 10 and over is four weeks, there's 128.
So do we leave the numbers the same for the next group and just change the dates, the years? The next part, the next section down?
That's two, that's basically the same thing, right?
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be years two through 10 again, and then 10 and over. Right?
Yes, ma'am. And then cap it at 80. Then we go to the next page.
And then the one week for every additional five years of work is removed.
Right.
On the 20-hour employees, that'd be the same thing.
Right.
All right, two to 10, 65, and 10 and over is 80, and that's what it's capped, is what y'all saying, all right?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And there's the 40-hour, good, good, we'll, we'll cover it all with this one, too. So. Okay.
Okay, so since I missed part of this, on 40 hours, 152 is going to be the max?
Correct.
Okay, and, and it's going to be 128 on the part-time?
Part-time, 32, and then 20 would be 80.
So these figures are, are using the number of hours per week, right? That they're.
Right, right, the 20, 32, or 40.
So now that we get to 40, how, how are those calculations?
Well, the 10, 10 hours for the first three months, as you say, and then first calendar year would be 56. So they work 40 hours, right? Then they're getting additional.
Two days.
Two days.
Yeah, it's the same, it's just different hours.
Right.
I thought we had talked about after the first full year, they would get two weeks or 40 hours.
After the first year?
Yeah.
No, I don't think we ever.
Yeah, it's after the second year. I mean, I don't know, I don't remember us talking about that. Yeah, it's after the second year. I mean, I don't know, I don't remember us talking about that.
Yeah.
We, we did, we did.
The second year is, makes sense. They get, they get them six hours after the first anniversary, after the first year, which is nothing we need to decide. It's going to be their, their anniversary and make work for CD, or we're going to do it our calendar year or fiscal year.
It's fiscal year, we.
As I was.
Yeah, we, we decided that.
They, they put it here, so I wouldn't.
Yeah, it wasn't, I, I, I think it was a poor decision to go to fiscal year versus calendar year, because we're going to be paying those hours whether they're working or not.
Well, right now, they're used to it. We've.
I know, we screwed them around already once before, and there's no reason to.
I don't think they feel screwed over.
Well, we, we, that's the only benefit they got. When you jack with people's, what benefits do they have with their money? You're messing with the motion.
The reason this is coming up, because all the guys were, October the first, they were, they, they started over. So they didn't have any time to take off for the holidays.
That's what brought this all to the head.
And if we go to the way we're doing it here, by week anyway, it wouldn't really matter which. We could use our, October, could use January.
Right.
But January.
It doesn't matter.
But then we'd be pro, prorating right now for three months, and that would make it difficult, because if they, right now, as, as of October one, if they've been here for two years, they get eighty-eight hours off.
Yeah.
Whenever they want to use it. They want to use it at Christmas time, they can.
So when, when do they, when do they have to use it?
By the end of, by September twenty-ninth of next year.
Of twenty-twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay, so they get it, they get access to all of their PTO come October first?
Right.
Okay, that's, that was a big contention, David.
Right, they, they, yeah, they want to be able to, and not have to, like, recruit. It's, it's, if you've been here two years, then you've recruited. That's it, you know, you're.
I still think working a full year for one week of vacation is a long time.
I think that's, a lot of companies do that. I don't know.
We've put one year, it's forty-eight hours for, for, it's. So it's, it's basically a week and a half.
Okay, that's.
It's a week and a half, and then if you wanted to take.
That's good, that's good. I'm all right with that.
Right.
Yeah?
Yeah, that way, if you wanted to take a couple of days, uh, extra off, it only costs you a couple of days. You can have two weeks if you want, anyway.
Yeah, it's, this is, this is really the only benefit they get from working at the city.
Right.
No, 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 they get heat.
They get heat? They get lots of heat.
One steam bath, yeah.
And then after, so new employee, after they've been here three months, they get ten hours or eight hours of time off?
Yeah, yeah.
They get eight of.
Eight hours for an eight-hour day, you know, the ones that work eight hours a day, the, the twenty-hour a week people only work five hours a day.
So after three months, they have some time.
A day, yeah.
All right.
And I, I, that was, that was something that I had thrown in there, you know, throughout the COVID thing, but we have ARPA funds if we need it for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the purpose, that's one of the purposes of throwing that money at everybody.
But any rate, that's all, that's all changed, and.
Are we?
I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, are we clear on the full-time employees, the salaried employees?
Yeah, the forty hours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do we do? We do the same thing?
Yeah, we're doing the same thing, two to ten, and then, uh, after. Ten and over, they cap out.
Yeah, one fifty-two, yeah.
Okay.
So, I, you want me to make the changes and, and make, send it out?
Yeah. Can we, can we, do I hear a motion to adopt these change, this with the changes?
That, that way, it's done, it's a done deal. We just update this, and we don't have to talk about it again.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised PTO for part-time as well as full-time employees with the changes.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. We've got, uh, no minutes until the next meeting. I was going to say we have five, but we don't. Now the fun begins. We can, we can get a refill of our coffee if you want.
Nope.
Were you abstaining?
Yep.
All right, it's five thirty-two PM on August twenty-fifth, and this is a budget workshop. Uh, I would like to establish our quorum. We have a full, uh, full quorum here of all of our council members. And first of all, is a review of draft for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget and council discussion. So, uh, the, the proposed budget has been sent out to all of you. What I would like to, uh, for you to look at, I don't know how much of a chance you've had to look at this. We, and also, I also put on your desk some calculations that I made over the, uh, the figures that Lynette sent out. We are at an eighty-nine percent collection rate. Uh, we thought, la, last year, we put in ninety percent, but it's looking like, we won't make that ninety percent. We're, we're hanging out at eighty-nine percent again. So, uh, if you look at those figures, the no new revenue tax rate is the tax rate that would bring in the same amount of money that we brought in last year. Last year, uh, our, our M and O rate was, uh, or the amount that, that we calculated to bring in was five hundred and one dollars, five hundred and one thousand, two hundred and thirty. And, uh, this would, if we use that same figure, or, or the, what do you call it, no new revenue rate, it would be five oh six, three twenty-eight. And the reason for the additional five thousand dollars is because of the new construction. So, uh, because that's not included in the, in the estimate. But, so it does bring a little bit more in, not enough to, to be able to do what we have to do. Uh, what I calculated on was the voter approval tax rate, which is the bottom portion there, it's point six oh five. And it's, there it says it's five, it would bring in five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four at a hundred percent collection rate. At eighty-nine percent, uh, collection rate, it's five hundred and twenty-three dollars, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. And that's what I based the budget figures on, our M and O figures. Now, with this INS estimate, uh, we don't need to go to point two oh two five, which is the voter approval rate, uh, because that would bring in more money than we need. We know how much our payment is for next year, it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. I believe you, you also have that, uh, those figures, or at least you should have a list of those figures.
We did, they're in here somewhere.
Yeah, when we, when we first got our, our bond issued, here it is. For twenty-twenty-three, the amount we will have to pay is a hundred and three, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And so what we were looking at is if we, uh, did an INS rate of point one five oh, it, it, that would mean it would be a hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four. And at eighty-nine percent, that's one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two. If you look at our balance in our, uh, Texas class account for INS, uh, we have a balance right now of ten thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. So we would have enough money, uh, with that amount brought in, you know, to cover the hundred and thirty-three. Actually, we could go with the one, uh, the point one four three three, seeing how much we have left over already. So we could, we could, uh, select either one of those. I had, I'd done a calculation on point one, uh, point one five oh, and I also did the one point, uh, the point one four three three. So definitely the INS rate, we can go with the no new revenue rate, but.
Point one four three three?
Well, we could do that, because see, you know, looking at what we have, we've already made the payments for this year. So we have ten thousand, one, a hundred and forty-one dollars left in that account. So we could actually go with the no new revenue rate. That would bring in a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seventy-one dollars, plus the ten thousand we got, and just barely do it. I kind of did the other one, because I feel, what, you know, if, what if we didn't collect the amount we need?
If we're off by a small margin, then we have to pull from somewhere else.
Yeah, so maybe going with the one point, the point one five instead of the point one four?
It, it may be prudent for us to keep a small buffer year over year, just for variations in collection rates.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
So we're going to use point one five percent? Yes and I?
That's, that's what my proposal is. Now.
Does that bring in, does that bring in a hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred and forty?
It brings in, well, it would bring a hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four if we had a hundred percent collection. But at eighty-nine percent, it'll bring in a hundred and twenty-nine, eight hundred and seventy-two. Plus the ten thousand we got in there, that's gives us, gives us a fairly decent buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The total payment is one thirty?
Three.
One thirty-three, nine seventy-five. Like I say, the figures, and Tommy and C D and I worked a couple of days on this budget. These are proposed figures. They are not final. The reason we're sitting here and doing this workshop is so we can go over line item by line item, and y'all can understand what's, you know, where we came up with these figures. Costs have gone up tremendously. Our audit costs are going up, everything, you know, everything is kind of going up. We're, we're talking about, you know, we brought Mr. I T in. His annual fee is going to be fourteen thousand, four hundred. That's not something we had before. It's new. Plus, we had to pay forty-eight hundred dollars for software, plus, you know, and I, I think that's an annual fee, isn't it, C D? The software for the, the forty-eight hundred for the I, I T stuff? Yeah, it's an annual fee. Now, what, what I suggested in some of these things, that we charge that to the ARPA fund. You'll see at the end of the thing, I've got some things in, in red, that I thought we could just go ahead and, and charge the ARPA fund. Originally, we were thinking the audit was going to be around twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, we've looked at, at this, it looks like it's more like sixteen thousand. We have to allow for, you know, the possibility of a little bit more for the audit, but it looks like it's going to be sixteen instead of twenty-five, which is good.
What do we have in the ARPA fund right now?
It's, has, has the money come in? It's on here.
The three fifty-five, eight twenty?
That's what's going to be.
That's the total.
Do we get the second tranche on that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
That, that money has not come in yet.
ARPA.
ARPA funds.
No. Right. The Texas class, it's a hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine oh five. Uh, that's, uh, the Corona Recovery Fund.
That's the ARPA fund.
Yeah, that's the ARPA fund.
So we've spent nothing out of this?
Grand administrator. Yeah, it, it wasn't a large amount yet, because we still got a hundred and seventy-six. Yeah. The maximum that they, the, the maximum administration cost for that fund is seventeen thousand, nine, uh, seven hundred and ninety-one. You, if you look at that ARPA kind of summary there, that's what they put in in the contract as a maximum cost. So I just put that in there, you know, as an estimate of what we would be spending. We can, we also talked about using the, the ARPA funds for our GLO match for the eleven million, four hundred thousand dollar grant. So that's why I put the one hundred and fourteen thousand, that's our match. The I, I T software is forty-eight hundred, and so I put that in there. Now, I just threw in thirty, to round it up to two hundred thousand, I put in thirty-eight thousand for code enforcement, because I'm thinking, you know, wouldn't it be nice to have a really, have a fund for code enforcement, so we could really take some action on getting code enforcement, you know, if we have to clean up properties, or if we have. We've never really had a fund to do that. And of course, like I say, this is all just an idea, a proposal, and anything can be changed. But, uh, I figured, uh, what I did there was just round, or, put that amount of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and nine to bring it up to two hundred thousand, that would have left us a hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty. We haven't received that second tranche, but when it, when we do it, that's what it'll be, uh, it'll be three hundred and fifty-five, eight hundred and twenty. That's the total amount we're receiving.
In two payments.
Well, yeah, we received half of it, and we haven't received the second half yet, but it will be coming, it should be coming anytime. Yeah, so we should be getting it. So anyway. Using the voter approval rate of point six oh five, and looking at, at our different line items that we, uh, as far as income is concerned, and what I did out here is I put last year's figures, last year's budget, and then the difference. Like I say, the, the new figure that, for the no new revenue, uh, tax rate at eighty-nine percent, because all, you know, it is at eighty-nine percent collection. It's, uh, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, it's in, it's, it brings it up with an additional twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty. Does that make any sense?
Yep.
Then, as we move down, tax penalties stayed the same, current year tax interest, uh, we, we lowered that by, um.
Hundred dollars.
No, we raised it by a hundred dollars, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we raised it by a hundred dollars. It gets confusing. And we raised the delinquent tax from thirty thousand to thirty-two thousand. We left the, uh, tax penalty at the same. We raised the interest from six thousand to seven thousand.
Are these budget numbers on the right for twenty-two, or are those actuals?
Those were twenty-two, uh, budget. Now, we looked at actuals to see where we were, to see what kind of estimate we'd, we'd come up with, because if we were actually.
Run rate for where we would finish the year on actuals? Did you do a run rate on where we would finish?
Pretty much, yeah. We looked at how much we spent and how much we figured we, or not spent, how much we've received, and what we figured we would receive between now and the end of the year, in order to be able to calculate what we expect to receive next year.
Okay.
Is that she faced with you lying?
Yeah, we had, we had the July printout as, where's my little ruler? I lost it. Anyway.
That's why we need lines.
I know, I know the lines really help.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, a clarification. Underneath that five twenty-three, uh, nine nine one, that is what we are proposing for twenty-twenty-three, yeah, right?
Yes, yes.
And the nine nine beside that to the right is what we actually budgeted for twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and then the, the final column is the difference.
Right.
So we kind of see where, where the difference is. Okay. Okay, we were down to tax penalty. We left the same. We did increase the, the estimated interest income to be 7,000 instead of 6, an increase of 1,000. Office receipts, we increased, or we decreased actually by $200.
What are those?
Miscellaneous office receipts.
Okay.
Or somebody comes in for copies or, you know, all that little, little stuff. And so, we do, oh, donations. We had gotten $800, or no, $500, and we increased that to 800. And so, that's, that's an increase of $300. Community center rental, we had an estimate last year of $3,000. We lowered that to 2,000 because we had the church renting this on a,
Gotcha.
Yeah, weekly basis. So, we lowered that. Culvert and road material, they come in here and they pay for culverts or, or, you know, road material. And last, last year, we had an estimate of 2,500, and we're, we increased that to 5,000. Permits, we put it $4,000. OSSF septic permits, we left it $4,500. That's what it was last year. Interest income, we did the same. Franchise fee, we kind of figured the franchise fee had probably come up this year because of, you know, the freeze last year and, you know, additional electric.
So, again, these numbers are what were on the budgets. This isn't the actual expenditure or the run rate of the expenditure per line?
No, no, we looked at, like I say, where, where we were as far as money that has come in. What we came, we came in, what, what was our actual franchise?
It would be good to see what our actual,
Well, if you, you've got your report from last month, and that's what we did.
Yeah, most of it's same Houston, and it goes up and down for some reason. Every year, one's higher than the other, next year's lower.
Right, and it's, it depends on the usage.
Yeah.
You know, how much, how much power we use. Now, having looked at, at the freeze that we had and the, and, you know, the, the additional electric that probably was spent, we figured we'd probably be up to about 30,000 this year. Here's Mr. I.T. speaking of the devil.
And, and Skip, you know that, that's one time. We only get that once, not every month.
What's that?
The franchise fees?
Yeah, that's not something we collect on a monthly basis, or, yeah.
Most of it's same Houston. It comes in one time. All at one time.
So, so what we brought in this year was, it was over to 27,000.
Yeah, I'm showing 30,184.87. That was as of July.
Yeah, well, that's the annual.
Right.
So, see, so we went with 30,000. That's pretty much a conservative estimate.
Yeah.
Garbage franchise fee, we increased to 12,000 based on what we've collected this year, and they, they pay on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, it's already over 12,000.
Why do they come up so much?
More people moving in.
More, more contracts, more contracts.
I mean, I, I made a note of that.
Yeah.
Why did that jump so much?
$3,600 because of, we have a lot of people that have moved here full-time. We got a lot, you know, with COVID, we had a lot of people that were weekend people that didn't have garbage service that have moved up here full-time. They've had a lot of new contracts. And we've had some, you know, we've had quite a few new builds, too. Phone franchise fee, of course, is going down. You know, we'd be lucky to collect $200 next year.
Yeah.
It just keeps going down every year. General sales tax, we're increasing that by 10,000, up to 85,000. We're doing really well in, in our sales tax and, you know, please frequent the liquor store and, and buy Vinnie's food because it helps our income. Municipal court operations, last year, we had a, what we had in the budget was an income of $5,000, and it was never broken down. And this year, there, there was a breakdown. And so, I, so we just put all of that breakdown in there, and it comes to $5,075. So, you know.
$75?
All the rest of these items here?
Yeah. Yeah, so. Anyway, so that brings us a total income of $720,366. Now, we look at expenses, and I have, I asked every department to come in here and to bring their estimate of what they wanted for next year. I said, ask for the moon. It doesn't mean you're going to get the moon, but ask for the moon, and, and we'll see what we can do. Now, operations, the OSSF fee, we increased to $200 from 110. That I'm not exactly, I don't remember, C.D. That OSSF fee?
That's what we pay the state, and it goes to somebody that sits there and shovels paper.
Oh, okay.
It's $10 per, per minute.
Oh, okay. See, I'm, I'm forgetting what it was.
$310 for a standard system, or $510 for a rubber.
Yeah, so the $10 goes to the state on each of those. So, we're figuring 200, which would be 20 installs. Election expense has been pretty steady at $5,500, so we left it there. Hopefully, it'll be the same. Accountant, auditor, and, and what I did was I put that, and we can, we can change that, but I put that in the ARPA funds because of the additional cost of our auditing due to, you know, our, our grants and our single audit. Appraisals, this year is, what we do is we get a, we get a bill, basically, from the appraisal district, and they tell us how much they're going to charge for the appraisals for the coming year. It's not something that's optional, and this is an exact amount.
It's an exact amount?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is what they sent for last year was 27,261. They've already told us next year it's going to be 31,849. And it's also based on value, on your value. And what they do is the value of the whole county, and then each entity pays their proportional part of that. So.
It's a 14% increase.
Look at the, yeah, the values have increased, too. Okay, tax collection, this is Lynette Cruz that does our tax collecting for us. She's charged 4,500. That's basically stayed the same. So, we just left the 4,500 in there. Legal and professional, that's $1,200, and that is?
Public notice.
Oh, that's it? Yeah, see, I forget stuff. Public notices. And we had nothing for that last year. We are looking at, with all our grants, and, and we have to put all that out in the, you know, we have to advertise in the papers for, for, you know, for bids, for proposals. So, we, that, we figured $1,200 for that. Insurance?
Just a minute. On those, when we put it out in the newspaper, will you, Beaumont as well as ours? Tyler County, both?
Our official newspaper is one we decide in the beginning of each fiscal year, and we have just always chosen the booster. But it's sometimes, sometimes we have to get it in the Beaumont paper because we can't wait a week.
Yeah. Okay.
Either that, or we're looking for wider coverage, like when we go out for bids for contractors. If we put it in the booster.
Nobody sees it.
There's not any big contractors.
That's what I was thinking. We use Beaumont a lot.
We have. But our official newspaper is the Tyler County Booster.
Tyler County Booster, yes.
Insurance, this is our, through TML, we went up $1,000 on that. Last year, your, last year's estimate was, our budget was 25,000. We went up to 26,000. Insurance actually is based on, you know, our equipment, all the equipment we have, our, our facilities and the, you know. So, and it is going to be going up this year. But we haven't gotten an estimate. Yeah. Right, and they'll send out the final pretty much next, next month, before the end of the fiscal year. But that's our estimate right now. Dues and fees, $2,000, and this is like to debt cog and, and the different things that we belong to. Yeah. Right. So. Moving right along, Mr. I.T., that's the one, oh, he's, he's, this is 14,400, and that's maintaining our I.T. Maintain, what would you call it, C.D.? He will be overseeing all the, the I.T. stuff for most of the computers and, right. So, it's.
$150 a month for his computers, and that's it.
Yep. Now, we had put, we had put 9,300 in this line item, and I moved 4,800 of that to the ARPA fund. So, it's 4,500 for the iWork software, which is what we're using for public works and for permits. And that's worked out really, really well in code enforcement. So, that's 4,500, and like I say, the other 4,800 I moved.
Yeah, and before we move on, the other day, there was a, I guess, a conference call, not a conference call, but a, what do you call those things?
Webinar?
Huh? Yeah, webinar. And of course, I didn't, what did you call it, dog and fight or whatever? But anyway, I was watched it, because C.D. was swamped. Jackie was swamped, and there was some great programs in there, but I didn't know which ones we had and which ones we don't have. And, and then, of course, every time he would mention this particular program, he would say, "For an additional cost, we can add this." So, with that being said, are we allowing in here for anything that we don't have to add?
No, this is what we've got right now.
We have permit management, and we have code enforcement, and we have the street.
I just want to make sure if there was anything else. But if we've got all the bases covered, that's fine.
Well, we could go crazy on stuff.
Well, you know.
And so, so the 9,300 total, that's the annual recurring cost for that system?
Well, no, no, it's 4,500. The 4,800 was for I.T. stuff, and that we moved over to ARPA funds. So, it's, it's 4,500.
Gotcha.
Consumables, $1,500. That's, you understand that paper and whatever's stuff that.
Toner.
Yeah, toner. Copier printer, we increased that to $3,500. Jackie's just going crazy. Printing stuff and copying stuff, and, and she's doing a phenomenal job, but it takes all that. You know, it, it increases our expenses in that area. Also.
I'm sorry. C.D. mentioned a couple of weeks ago about a possible additional printer or a new printer. Is that captured in here?
No.
That would be in the capital, capital expenditure.
Okay, so that'd be a different.
Yeah, we could do that.
That wouldn't be capital equipment, though.
Yeah, it is, because it's long time.
Anything that can be depreciated, right?
Printers are cheap. It's the ink that costs. They'll give you a printer if you'll buy the ink, almost.
It depends on the type of printer.
Capital expenditures, and that would save us budget money.
No, so where would you take that money out of if you're going to buy another printer?
Well, like Councilman Blackstone said, it's the ton of cartridges.
Well, that's the cost, yeah.
I mean, now, where it's used to, you could buy a decent laser for around 400 to 500. Now, it's been going to 700 to 800.
And we need another one?
Generally, well, not yet. And we also have one that just really doesn't get used up at the substation, a color printer, so we could pull that. A pinch for what's really down here.
But no, John, we haven't allowed anything for new printer.
Okay, actually, I wasn't trying to throw you under the bus. I just want to make sure, if you mentioned something about it, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna look into it, then we need to make sure we budget for it.
Why do we need a new printer? We use, I mean, I'm asking the question because is the other one, is it, is it old? Is, is it going on its last leg?
How old is it?
We might show up and the thing will come to life. We've had that happen with that high-speed printer that's open in Jackie's office. And that was a $500 cost. The color printer, it's working fine. All of a sudden, it quits printing black ink, and then you have blue or something replacing it.
Okay. How, how old did you say that printer is?
The brother is now going on six years old.
Uh-huh. In the cannon?
The color printer is three years old. One that I use because it's plugged in, it's not wireless. That one started with us before we came to city.
But it still works?
Yeah, it's just, it's black and white, and it's, but, but it works. It's a fax machine, too. Anyway.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious, just for knowledge.
Who would buy a capital expenditure?
What?
Someone would buy a capital expenditure. It depreciated over 15 years.
$400?
There you go. Okay, contingency miscellaneous, what does that include, C.D.?
It's the odds and ends that come along that don't fit in any of these other categories.
We increased that by $500. Public notice, we actually decreased by $500. I'm not sure why we did that.
So, what public notice is that?
Well, I, I would anticipate if we're going to increase our,
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement. We're gonna be doing some additional communications with the public to get the word out and communicate appropriately.
Right.
You send out a letter, then you send out a.
We increased postage from $500 to 2,000 because we have to send out a lot of certified mail. I had skipped that line.
So, we're on public notices?
Mm-hmm.
So, what, what public notice goes in this category?
Are you proposing condemned, or, you know, we consider it, it's completely gone? The owner's not doing anything about it. It needs to run down, and it all has to go through the newspaper.
We go out for bids. We have changes to ordinance proposed.
I just got the grant administrator that they are posting notice in the Beaumont office regarding antiquities that, if anybody would like to comment on that, and then environmental for the grants below Tristan and below Camelot Dam. That was out of blue. I, I wasn't expecting that one, so.
And that doesn't, and that doesn't come out of? That doesn't come out of the grant funds?
I don't think so. I'll have to go check if it's right or not.
So, here's, here's my question. We have legal and professional, 1,200 for public notices?
Legal and professional, that goes back to based on what we paid for expenses outside of the contract with Brad. If he talks to planning zone, if I have a question like, should the mayor sign this document because it includes IPRA, that's not, that's the question.
Oh, okay, so we're, we were confused about that a little while ago.
Yeah, because the public notice is actually pulled out of that.
Does that make sense, Will?
There's now, I mean, or could we also?
It sounded like we were, yeah, duplicating.
When we talked a few months back about this consultant, that, let's say, that we had to go use because Brad said that he couldn't dot all the i's across all the t's. because Brad said that he couldn't dot all the i's and cross all the t's, he may want to go out there, so. Would that come from that line item also?
Wouldn't be much.
Where would it come from?
Contingency miscellaneous.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
But if, but if we're going to increase the work code enforcement, I don't see how we can leave this at twenty-five hundred. We reduced it five hundred dollars. Looks like we ought to be raising it about a thousand. Because I didn't understand all the, as much as they're doing, and we put a lot of money in there to do a whole lot more next year.
Well, that's a suggestion, because we could look at that.
But I mean, just see, me like that one is one we-
Well, and I guess-
We saved some money over here on the-
I guess you could charge that code enforcement line item with additional postage or additional expense that-
Transfer money up there if we need it.
Right, because it'd be, it'd be all pretty much that code enforcement.
Because they, thirty-eight thousand, whatever.
Well, yeah.
If you did that.
To be looked at.
Otherwise, Jackie's gonna have to walk to each house and tell them. I'm just kidding. We would never do that.
Okay, administration, administration contracts.
Mayor, before we move on from the office and administration segment, I know that in the past handful of years, I'll make this brief, in the past handful of years, we've gone from about a dozen line items that we categorize budget to about twelve dozen line items, and I know that it seems to be growing and growing. I would like to again make a recommendation to council that we look at splitting the hardware services and software cost in IT in each of our primary departments, so that each department can track those costs. There's things that we'll have software subscriptions to every year, and there's going to be years that we have to buy new equipment. Like right now, the Marshals Department, I don't see any line items at all for technology or software or any of those categories. I think it would be a good idea to set ourselves up to be able to track those costs and forecast those costs in the future.
So you're talking about splitting out that fourteen thousand four hundred into so much of that is this and so much of-
Yes, because part of that is, will actually be Mr. IT's service. Part of that is recurring annual fees for software, so a portion of that fourteen-four would probably-
Well, and the software on top of that is forty-eight hundred.
Right, so there's software purchase-
It's about twenty thousand a year that we're going to be spending on that.
Right, so there's software purchases, software subscriptions, and then there's actual IT service.
I don't think you purchase any of the software anymore, you have to, you-
It's all rental.
It's all rental. So it's a recurring expense, it's not, yeah.
Right, so, you know, that being said, I think to be able to look at those different components would be worthwhile. I'm just going to make the recommendation again.
Okay, so what we can do is look at splitting that out into the different departments. It's still, but bottom line, it's fourteen thousand four hundred plus the forty-eight hundred, and so we could split that into different-
Right, and is, is that inclusive of, of the software fees in the other departments?
Yes, yeah, it includes all of it.
Well, I know we've got, iWorks on a separate line item, but I don't see anything as far as the, the Marshals Department, as far as their annual software cost.
Well, we didn't break it up, but you're asking me to, asking us to break that out, and we can do that.
I'm recommending.
I'll ask Mr. IT to, to, you know, split that out. How much would this, you know, if we split it out, how much would each category be? And it, it's dependent on how many computers are in each, you know, you know, we can do that.
I just like seeing the gross number for the category.
It's, it's nice, but, you know, I mean, from a corporate standpoint, at a certain point, I see the city growing, and at some point, each department head may be asked or be tasked with, at budget time, putting together numbers to review, for the mayor to review, and then for council to review, and that would actually break things up and allow each department that's most familiar with their budgetary figures to be accountable in the forecast. So that's just an option.
I don't have a problem with you breaking it out, I just like seeing the gross number.
Right, right. No, no, and that's, I, that, that wouldn't be that hard a thing to do.
Maybe it would be as simple as adding a line item into the, the-
The Marshals.
Office administrative and general expense. Marshals, Mr. IT, Marshals, software, and then have the total right there, so we can see the gross number.
Okay, see, we do have computer and technology in the, the line item for, for the Marshals office. Did you look in there?
I see payroll, payroll tax, vehicle repair, fuel, training.
Technology, uh-
I don't see that.
Oh, that's under municipal court. We should have had that under there. Marshals payroll, Marshals fuel, training, because, okay.
We just lumped everything together in the main, in the fourteen-four, that, in the administration. So, you know. Actually, when you, when you break it out, I don't think that's a problem, but I, and when you ask Terry, for instance, he's just going to go for CD and say, hey, how much would it cost for this and this and this? So we probably administratively will put it in there, but we can break it out by each department.
Well, that gives the opportunity to, at budget time, go to Terry or any other department lead and say, hey, do you anticipate any-
Increase or any, any expenditures?
Do you, do you have need of hardware this year?
How many, how many computers do we have right now?
Too many.
Twelve?
Twelve, fourteen, something like that.
Thirteen, was it?
We have seventeen.
Yeah, and, and that includes public works.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You got to have technology.
You know, I understand where you're going, but I think it's just, there's something to be said about keeping it simple.
That's the way it is now. It's right there, we know how much it costs, we know how much it, software.
If it comes down to wanting to know how, how it was split out, we could get those numbers.
Yeah, right, exactly, somewhere.
We have also, we must sell our software, so, yeah.
Moving right along.
Okay. I got lost here, I was, I used to get my calculations.
Administration contracts, floodplain.
Okay, floodplain, zero. Currently, Joe McIntyre is still our floodplain administrator, and so, you know, if somebody's wanting for insurance purposes or, you know, home loan or whatever, Joe's the one that reviews it, and he refuses to take ten dollars a month. So we have that at zero. We are probably going to have, Jackie is looking into taking that training, right? And CD is also taking it, but currently, it's zero. Website, we are doing in-house, our website in-house, I hope everybody's had a chance to look at the new website. It's really looking great.
Yeah, it looks good.
And so instead of paying, you know, an outside person to do that, it's going to be, and five hundred dollars is on the high side, it's probably going to be less than that, a few hundred dollars. So that's what we put in there, that's why that was reduced. City attorney, uh-
This is his contract fee.
Yeah.
He shows up for a council meeting.
Right.
So he's gone up again this year?
Yeah.
We keep having longer meetings for some reason.
Yeah.
So does he charge additional fees for other advice?
Well, it used, yes.
He does?
Yes, and he charges that at a, at a very reasonable rate, but what he did was, our meetings started going so long, and he said, instead of just, you know, a monthly fee, he went to an hourly rate, which I, I get. So there's an increase a little bit in, in the city attorney fee.
Yeah, it really is not much, and it's certainly nice to have him here.
Oh, absolutely, we need him.
Sixteen percent, on an annual, annualized basis, that's not bad.
Yeah. Then OSSF inspections, that's the gentleman that comes out for, he's the official, what do you call it? Well, inspector.
TECQ.
Yeah, he's licensed.
Yeah.
And so we, we lowered that to three thousand thirty-seven fifty. Not sure exactly why we did that.
I know, because you're counting on twenty additional permits in another line.
Yeah, and you would have to inspect each one of those.
Sir?
We didn't have as much expense at thirty-seven fifty, so that's the reason.
Yeah, it was reduced, yeah.
That's why it'd be nice to be able to see next to each line where we were year-to-date or annualized.
If you look at your, your financials that you got last month?
I did, they don't match up.
Oh, well, that's true.
They're hard, they're, you can't follow them.
Yeah.
Well, that's another thing, we, CD and I spent, well, CD spent an entire day with the, the new accountant, and hopefully, our reports are going to look similar to this, and it'll be, this is a budgeted amount, this is the actual, the monthly, you know, and then year-to-date, so that it's clear.
With year-to-date, you can figure out an annualized number and see, be able to accurately look at what your, what your actual, or annualized actual is compared to what you're budgeting. Right now, it's just, this is what we budgeted last year, and this is what we're budgeting this year.
Yeah, but when we looked at that, we projected, you know, based on two months to go. So, I mean, we, we just didn't pull it out of the air.
Well, I, I know, I know, it would just be nice to see the number.
Oh, yeah, I'm right on that.
I mean, right now, I'm just, not that I doubt you, but I'm just taking your word that you did that. You, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do. But, but really, we, we did, I mean, it, we spent many hours on this thing.
I'm sure.
And, and part of it is because it's so confusing.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
There's, there's got to be a correlation, it's got to, it's got to all match.
Yeah.
So it makes sense, because you can't follow this to this, it doesn't, there's nothing that matches.
That's why it took us two days.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's the reason CD spends so much time with Keith, I guess it is, because we have to have something that we can look at, every time we look at, you know, here's the budget, and you look at what we have now, and you say, what the hell is this?
Yeah.
And, and we need something like we used to have, really, so you can tell. This is where we are, this is how much we, this is how much we have left. But anyway, CD's in charge of that, and he'll do a good job, I know.
Well, Kyle is going to be doing, Heineman is going to be doing our accounting.
Yeah.
So it should-
So moving right along.
Okay, our lease, unless it changes, is still going to be fifteen hundred dollars for the substation up front. Alarm system is five hundred and twenty, it's the same amount as, you know, we're, it's a lease system. Accountant, we're going from sixty-two hundred to ten thousand. And our accounting has gotten more complicated, you know, what can we say?
And see, when I looked at the budget through July, and we budgeted six thousand two hundred dollars, but actual expenditure, zero, so how are we-
Well, that's because you have to look somewhere else.
Okay, all right.
That's why it's confusing.
I know.
Oh, yeah, look at, there's so many places.
Oh, there's other ones, yeah, yeah, right.
The whole thing.
You're telling me to look at this from last month?
That's right, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't send anyone to do that, because it's totally incomprehensible.
This time, we split out between the accountant and audit.
Yeah, our audit actual through July was eighteen thousand five hundred.
Yeah, that's a one-time thing, though, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this was an unusual year, though, we were changing over, yeah.
Yeah, it's one-time shot, or one-time expense.
We hope.
We hope, we hope.
No, we trust that this, you know, moving forward, it's going to be more understandable, John, and everybody else.
Let me ask a quick question.
Sure.
I guess we're getting ready, going to payroll next. Where does the sign up front come into the budget? The electronic sign, where is it budgeted in here?
You mean the maintenance of it, or the, the operation of it?
Maintenance, operation, well, now electricity goes to the substation.
Mr. IT.
Electricity is a minimal amount.
What?
On our sign. These ones working on it.
Well, he's working on it right now for the, the repair. It was damaged by lightning, by the way.
Do we, are we budgeted for that in this, or we're-
For the upcoming year? Hopefully, we're going, well, we shouldn't have the damage that we had before. Now, Holly is the one that programs it.
Right.
So that's, she's the one that gets everything on there.
We got to buy, we got to buy a part.
Right, and he ordered the part, the part came, and it was the wrong part, so.
That's okay, I just wondered, where's it come out of the budget?
That would be an MRO, MRO, or M and O is what you call it, but maintenance, repair, and operating expense.
Right, and it's coming, well, of course, the repair right now is coming out of this year's budget, not next year's budget. Now, I haven't, I, we didn't put anything in there to maintain that sign.
Any cost would come out of buildings or?
Yeah, oh, it's, yeah. Yeah, that's true.
I thought we had a line in there for MRO or M and O somewhere.
Okay, I just, just-
Well, that's, that's building and grounds, kind of goes under there, in our property maintenance. And we could-
Well, that would, that, well, I mean, if you want to get technical, so would vehicle repairs. Maintenance, repair, and operating expense, ice machine breaks, refrigerator. Anyway, let's move, move along.
Before we, before we get off of this, and great subject, Will, my question is, if we got damaged by lightning, it's not if, it's when, if we didn't do anything to maybe mitigate this from happening again, or is this something we can do?
What they're doing is they're going to change out the cable that's in there and put in fiber.
Okay.
So it cannot happen again.
Okay, all right, great.
They?
Mr. IT is working on it.
Ah, okay.
Mr. IT and Holly, they've spent hours, you know, working on it.
I've seen them up there, I saw them with the thing open, and all the LEDs were lit up, but he couldn't do anything with them, so apparently, it's some other board.
Yeah, and, well, and he, yes, and he was trying to adapt the one that they sent to avoid having to spend more time waiting for another one, but there was no way that he could do that, so. But that is a good question, Will, and it's going to come out of this year's budget.
Okay, I just-
Yeah. Moving down to payroll expenses, were there any other questions about that section?
No, no, it's not.
Moving right along, council is twenty-five hundred dollars, that's what we had last year, that's what this year, it's our, you know, ten dollars a meeting, fifteen dollars a meeting, and whatever, that's what that is.
So we don't get a raise?
And let, well, I guess we could vote ourselves a raise, and, I mean, now's the opportunity.
We do have a lot of ARPA funds.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Me too, me too, brother.
That's been done, and it's not real popular.
No, no, ma'am.
Supervisor of dams, of course, gets ten dollars a month. And city administrator, that's CD's salary. CD has finally reached that ripe old age of sixty-five to where he's on Medicare now. And we have not given CD a raise in forever, because it would have kind of knocked him out of a category as far as insurance was concerned, and it would have cost him more for insurance than our raise would have amounted to. We put some additional, and we raised his salary, because the other thing is, his social security is going to be based on the last few years that he works. So we went ahead and raised his salary from forty-three oh nine oh to forty-six thousand. What we did not do last year was separate out the payroll tax. This, this year, we're separating it out, so it's real clear, it's three thousand five forty-two. There, there's still, and the vehicle expense has not changed, it's eighty- There's still, and the vehicle expense has not changed. It's eighty-four hundred dollars. Any questions about that? Okay, next, we move on to our executive secretary.
Okay. So what is CD's title?
City Secretary.
Okay.
You've got a conflict of interest.
What is?
Conflict of interest.
Well, you got a conflict. You have city administrator, and you have an executive secretary. It's confusing.
We had to figure out a title for Jackie over here, because she's more than a clerical assistant. That's what it was that before. Now, CD is actually our city secretary. That's his official title. City administrator is something that Mayor Brockhaus came up with when he was here. We talked about that the other day. It's kinda confusing. We could just change this here as city secretary.
I'm just.
So to keep it consistent, because he is our city secretary, and now all the documents that he signs that says city secretary.
Well, I'm just looking, and you got executive secretary, and then you're gonna have a city secretary.
Well, okay, come up with a title for Jackie.
No, that's.
She wears every hat that you can imagine, and, you know, we're trying to figure out, what could her title be? Uh. City secretary, uh. She shouldn't care as long as she gets paid.
City secretary and the executive secretary to the city secretary.
So you have city secretary and you have an executive.
You could put the executive assistant.
I think it's splitting hairs, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever. Good.
What do you mean, whatever?
That's what I said. Go with it.
Okay, well, no, if you wanna, I mean.
No, no, do you have a different suggestion? Because, you know, this is, we set this up for our reports and everything, and I think it's a good idea to change CD to secretary.
Would you guys put on my sign?
Oh.
What'd we put on it?
Code enforcement.
Yeah.
No?
It's only number hats.
And I don't know, I didn't have anything to do with that. Somebody came up with it.
Wasn't me. Terry did it.
Oh, you mean, like, nameplate? Well, you came up with that. He had to order a nameplate, so he came up.
What does it say?
Oh, yeah, you expect me to read it?
Okay, I see Jackie Black. Executive administrator. Okay, does that sound good?
Or, I mean, yeah. I mean, whatever.
And that differentiates.
The two.
Yeah, okay.
So she now.
Okay.
What do you now?
I'll get on the conversation.
Executive administrator?
Are there documents that CD has a specific title listed on that he consistently uses?
City secretary.
Yeah.
I would think that that would be the nomenclature that we should go with.
Well, for CD.
Can you change that? Can you change that in the software?
This is what we talked about last.
Okay, then change it to what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I've got that change there. Talked about the, talked to the accountant, and from now on, it's gonna be city secretary for CD and executive administrator for Jackie. Does that work?
I'm just most concerned with what CD is signing off on documents as being in parody.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Accounting.
Yeah, and Will brought that up the other day. We talked about it, so we need to get that change in the software. Uh, no.
Why don't we ask CD what he wants to be called?
Claude.
Claude.
It doesn't matter. Officially, there's, in that big book, defined things that the city secretary does. I go far outside of that.
Really, more city administrator.
That's what it has been for all these years. Now, we have different departments, so. It doesn't matter. When I officially sign something, it's the city secretary.
But if we called you the administrator, then you would sign city administrator.
Okay, the city warden has a city administrator.
City manager.
And I have executive secretary as well. So, that's kind of what led the power to me.
But that was when we first started, twelve years ago. I mean, we've expanded tremendously since then. I think city administrator works better than city secretary, but that's just me. I mean, I would change it if it was me. But we have to vote on it.
Not from my perspective.
Mr. Woodrow.
He's gonna lose his title altogether.
Would it be difficult to change your doc, your city administrator? Would that cause a big issue?
The only difference comes when it comes an elected position. Then it's city manager. Otherwise, it's no specific issues anywhere that I can find.
So you could sign?
City administrator.
Minute, or minutes, or whatever documents, because you usually sign a test city secretary. You could put city administrator on there?
Yeah.
No problem?
You already have a shirt.
He does, yeah.
That's right.
Goes back a ways, yeah.
Well, if it makes anything, I'd like to make the motion, we change city secretary to city administrator.
Makes more sense.
It's not on the agenda, but.
I know, I know. See if it makes any difference.
Okay, yeah, we have it listed here as city administrator, so, so he's city administrator and she's executive administrator?
Make our assistant.
How about executive assistant administrator?
But it doesn't fit on the nameplate.
Oh, it's too, not enough room there, okay.
City assistant administrator.
When you sign something, they're sending out, what are you putting underneath your name?
City secretary.
No, no, I know you are. I'm talking about.
Jackie.
Jackie, I'm sorry.
Depends on what I'm sending out, because I do.
I know, I know, that's why I was, that's what I was saying.
Depends on what hat she has on at the moment.
Right, okay.
Court clerk, code enforcement official.
What could, what could, what title could be an umbrella for all of those functions?
That's what they came up with, that one.
Okay.
Administrator?
Yeah, the executive administrator, that's why they came up with it.
Is that all right to have her executive administrator and the other one city administrator?
Yeah.
Then we can move on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We got a motion.
We, it's not on the agenda. That's workshop, yeah.
Yeah, this is a workshop. We're not.
Put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Well, she's already.
Do we need to do it? It already says city administrator.
You know.
Okay, just change it, S to an A.
Oh, wow. Anyway, getting back to the budget, we have executive administrator, and this was Missy's position. She had been here quite some time, so last, so when we came up with this estimate, it was, and I'm not sure, again, that, that thing was so confusing. What I had, what I figured was last year's budget was thirty-one thousand three twenty, and I don't know. Uh, but we, we're raising Jackie's salary, and the, the income will be twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty, and the payroll tax is one thousand nine hundred and nine.
Okay, with that being said, after our last meeting, did we not say that anything like that would have to go to executive session?
Well.
I mean, I'm not disputing.
You shouldn't be naming, well, what do you do?
Right.
We, you know, you have to discuss the budget, you know, and I should probably say the position, not the person.
Right. I'm all for it, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, and I don't know how to handle that. How do you go into closed session when you're working on budget line items?
I know, well, just like making a motion, you really can't, so.
And we don't have anything to hide, for sure.
No.
We don't have any money. We're gonna hide it.
Okay.
We've got part-time clerk. That's gone up somewhat. It's gone up two thousand dollars. And, I don't know, now I'm, Sean, now I'm afraid to make comments.
Well, if you look at the economy, everything costs a lot more expenses for everything, so, you know, all our employees hadn't had a raise in, ever, so, you know, we just felt like this was a good year for it.
Like, I think we all agree. I mean, if you wanna keep your employees, then you need to pay them, especially if they're doing a good job, so.
Right, right.
Then they are.
Yep. Okay, are there any other questions around payroll in that category? Okay, moving down to training, administration. This is our executive administrator is going to take the following training. She's gonna do code enforcement to become a licensed code enforcement officer as soon as we can find someone that will be her mentor, because she has to have a mentor for a year. We've contacted Jasper. Jasper helped, did it for Joe. We're trying to see if someone will step up to be that mentor for her. Clerk, that's court clerk. You've already taken that training. Is that a yearly thing?
The court clerk, I haven't done.
Oh, I thought you had done that.
Because I'm asked to postpone it until we get somebody else hired or something.
Right, okay, and then dispatch, she's been taking calls, and, or, you know, in order to be able to take calls and, explain that one.
Yeah.
She really needs to be licensed, or trained as a dispatcher.
Right now, we cannot tell Terry or any of other marshal deputies that they need to go check someplace. We can write a note and say, this is the situation that's been reported. It's up to them. Now, a dispatcher can say, okay, we've had a call at such and whatever address, would you go check that out?
Yeah.
Dispatch.
You know, you can take the wood out of that and just, you have to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. So she's gonna take that training, and plus, she's gonna take the floodplain training. You know, I think, I think we have to have a shelf with lots of hats on it.
Executive administrator. Lot of hats.
Anyway, so we.
Now, the floodplain, that doesn't take a lot of, any more time. I mean, we've called on Joe one time the last year. The new FEMA floodplain maps encompass a bit more area, and so you kinda have to be up to speed on that, and that's where the training comes in. FEMA provides a bunch of that online.
Yeah.
You still have to take it.
Right, but we did increase the line item from two thousand to three thousand. Counsel training, we've got it fifteen hundred. That's like, well, whatever training we get involved in, you know, we've, in the past, gone to TML trainings. We haven't done any lately because there's been.
Covid.
Well, covid, kind of, everything now is kind of online. They're beginning to have more in-person trainings, but we went ahead and left it at fifteen hundred dollars, or we put in fifteen hundred dollars. Per dam, eight hundred dollars. And see, this was in our old budget, but it was not broken down like this. It was kind of all glogged together, so we are breaking it down to, you know.
Total of six thousand dollars.
Right, pretty much. And conference fees, meals at debt, like debt cog, you know, like we went to last month, skip, and, you know, the city council member's meal is paid for. If you take your spouse, you get to pay for that yourself, but we have an allowance for meals for that. And so that's a total of six thousand dollars for those, for those expenses. Okay, down to public works. Now, this little note that I put, reduced due to free material we will be using, that was a note, when I, I sent this to CD and to Tommy on Sunday. I was riding to Austin. I was doing the stuff in the car, and so I sent it to them to tell them why I had reduced that amount from the original amount we had. Actually, last year, the budgeted amount was seventy thousand one oh seven, so we're increasing our road material to a hundred and three thousand. It's not a reduction, it's actually an increase. It was just a reduction from what we had originally thought about. Does that make sense? Equipment fuel, costs have gone up, so we increased it from seventy-five hundred to eighty-five hundred. Equipment repair, we've had, we've spent quite a bit on equipment repair already this year, and so we went from nine thousand to ten thousand. We're about to the max on our expenditure already.
So does that include the marshal's vehicles?
No.
No?
No, this is public, this is public works.
Strictly public works, okay.
Yeah. Supplies, again, we, they have had more expense than, than anticipated on supplies, and so we increased their budget for this coming year to five thousand dollars. Street signs have been at six thousand dollars. We're right at that as far as expenditures, and we determined that, you know, we would need that same amount for next year. So.
Let me back up to the equipment repair. We spent eighteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars on repair in.
This year.
This year.
But we're, we're hoping that once you get that thing fixed, whatever, you know, the track on the, on the medics or whatever it is, we won't have to do that next year. So some of those things are one-time, we hope are one-time expenses.
And we were stuck with really having to figure out where we cut expenses. I mean, this happened when?
Yesterday?
Yesterday, yeah. It's like, oh my God, we're still way out of whack on this budget. Street maintenance labor, this includes raises for, for all of our public works department, and it's still a little bit less than last year because we are short one employee. Last year, we had five, we had six, and we, we're, now we have five, including.
Are we planning at some point to replace that one person, or are we gonna increase the hours on the ones that we have?
Not at this point. We just, David Marshall came in with his request for, for this coming year for, as far as salary increases and whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I talked to him today about whether we should really look at, you know, an additional person or so, but he doesn't feel like right now is the time to do that. So it doesn't include more people, no. You can see the difference in the payroll tax and in the, the actual budget from last year. Any other questions about that?
So does this include increased hourly wages for the individuals?
Yeah, but like I said, this coming year is five people instead of six people, so that's why even with the increased amount, you know, the increased salary.
Increased hourly amount is still coming in, a lower annual amount.
Almost the same thing.
Yeah, I think all the, all the four employees got the two dollar raise, I think is what it was.
Everybody got a raise.
Well, I'm talking about public works.
That's what I'm saying. All the public works people got a raise.
That's what I said.
That's why she heard that. Somebody heard it.
Well.
We're really on the same page, right?
Yeah, it's been a long day.
Yeah, it has been a long day. Okay. Dam repair and maintenance, again, we were at a point that we were just, where do we cut? You know, what, the estimate we had, Will, you help me with this one, was thirty-five thousand, you originally asked for thirty-five thousand. Fifteen thousand of that was for caulking, and twenty thousand was for Tristan Dam bulkhead. Now, that was at two hundred dollars a foot, which I think is way on the high side.
I, I told you, I rethought that, and I think that we need to run with that number because the depth of the bulkhead is far deeper than what mine is.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, we paid a hundred and ten last time.
Mm-hmm.
I think, huh? One oh seven.
For how many feet?
Well, it was for, a linear foot was a hundred and seven dollars.
How many feet?
It's four hundred.
Four hundred feet.
Three, three fif, three fifty.
Right.
So.
So what, okay, the other thing is, Rusty, you came up with sixty feet?
I said sixty.
And Rusty came up with a hundred. Now, in reality, because of, you know, our budget and what it looks like, we, we may not be able to do it all this year. We may, you know.
Well. Well.
So how much of that would, I don't mean to interrupt, how much of that would be included in that dam rebuild on?
After you gave me the number, Mosley, whoever he is.
It was Mosley.
Yeah, and I talked to him. You're looking probably, on the high side, maybe $125 a linear foot, ballpark, till I get some numbers. I said.
And the lead time?
One year before you ever start, and they're not, they're not, they don't have any liability insurance, so they're out. But I'm looking for a budget number that we can work with. So I came back and I said 12,500. And we'll do what we can do.
12,500, what do you mean?
12,500 for the bulkhead.
Oh.
And go as far as we can go. But if we get in a problem and that bulkhead does not hold up, then we're gonna have to go in there and get it done.
Oh, yeah.
Cause it, cause it's, it's got big gaping holes in it now.
The, the new bulkhead, oh, the old one?
The old, the old one. I mean, there's.
Well, at this point, we've allowed 10,000 for that. So it might be not completely finished, or we have to move some money from some other account later on in the year, but if it's a year from now, it'd be next year's budget anyway.
Well, he can't do the work.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to find somebody else that's got liability insurance.
Well, we know somebody.
They don't have liability, they don't have liability insurance.
Oh, no.
There's no one around here.
Did they have liability insurance where they put you in?
When they did, they did.
Okay, okay, so we have to find somebody.
Cause I talked, I've talked to Curtis, and he gave me another number, and that guy is probably really good, but he's really, really expensive, so he's, he's an automatic out. Curtis Paget out, he's out of Galveston. He does all kinds of bulkheads down, I got that from Curtis, but he's 250 to 300, 250 to 300 dollars a linear foot.
Yeah, but if he's building for Galveston, be like Lake Livingston, that's a heck of a lot bigger bulkhead than we would need.
It's deeper, it's saltwater.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the material, you know, would be more expensive down there. The only way to get an actual bid is to have him come and, and look at what we've got.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're used to doing, you know, really.
Deep saltwater stuff, brackish water.
Right. Not only that, the wave action, we don't, Tristan is very low wave action. We don't have motor ropes going in there.
Only during the hurricane.
It's a no wake, yeah, well, storms, yeah, you do get wave action, but not near like we have in Charmaine.
Well, so what do we want to do with this?
Well, I reduced it 2,500, Will says 12,500, which would take it to 2,750. With the difference of 2,500, I think we could probably do some line item transfers if we had to.
So we leave it at 10 for the time being.
Right now, it's, till we get somebody out here, we're on them.
Yeah.
It's the best guess, it's the best we can do.
Right.
Well, how many feet do we need to replace?
Yeah, like, Will, Will came up with 60, and then Rusty said 100.
He wanted to do 100, so probably, you know, somewhere near 75. But we've, you know, there's certain parts that we're gonna have to get in there and get. If we can get it for $125 a square foot, I mean, a linear foot, that'd be 12,500.
For the 100, yeah. So can we leave it at 12, 25,000 right now? Are you okay with that?
Does that take care of other maintenance as well, the caulking?
Well, the caulking, yeah.
Caulking would be another 12,500. So we may have, then we may have to spray the dam, do some herbicide, but we can do that as. Is not a big cost factor, no.
Oh, yeah. So is that just the top plate, or has it affected the, the actual bulkhead itself?
Both.
Both, all the way?
All the way.
I have Randy's number. Oh, shoot.
We can just leave it there, and we have to, we'll have to move some money.
Yeah, right now, you're just trying to get numbers to fit?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm, I'm okay with, with that as long as Will is in.
Well, that's the thing, if, if Will's in agreement, we're, we're good.
Whatever.
I mean, we just, if we have to, we get in a bind, and we gotta fix the dent, we gotta fix the dams.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's that emergency thing, right? You can always declare that, too.
Mm-hmm.
Now, moving along, if we're okay with that. Mar, the marshal's department payroll, they asked for 109,000, which is what we're giving them. Last year, it was 97,714, and so it's an increase of 11,286. The payroll tax will increase 2,476, and it's based on, of course, that 109,000. Vehicle repair.
Marshal's working how many hours a week?
Okay, we have two at 32 and one at 40. And plus 800, 840 dollars a, a year, which doesn't seem like a whole lot, but that's for like, if.
Per, per person?
Our backup marshals put in a shift now and then, and this is what they asked for.
It's 104 hours a week?
Yep. From six, from, I can't remember what it was last year.
96.
We gave them, yeah, we gave them what they asked for. We, we less, we lowered the amount that they had asked for, for vehicle repair and fuel. Let's see. They did it per car. They were asking for fuel was gonna be, they were asking for $21,000, and that's just way more than we can manage. So we put 12,000 in there for fuel. Vehicle repair, they asked for 18,000. So we put that 12,000. Hopefully, hopefully, we can live within, within that, within that amount. Training, they had asked for 2,000, we upped that to 2,500. And what we didn't, somehow, I didn't get in there, was the 2,000, 2, 2,500 for computer and technology that they had asked for.
Is that in this other?
I think we left that in with the 14.
Okay, I guess we included that in the.
That's back over here in office administration.
Yeah, the 14,000 for.
GNA.
So we've increased their, you know, the marshal's line item considerably from last year, and I don't have that exact figure, cause like I said, try to pull that up.
Last year?
Yeah.
103,577.
So we're up to 143,839.
And they asked for 172.
Yeah, what, they really did ask for the, they really did ask for the moon.
Well, they were told to, weren't they?
Huh?
They were told to, weren't they?
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
103. 11,000.
So 27% increase. So we have more, more feet on the ground, more hours. We have more vehicles.
The salary is still the same, it's still 20 an hour, that didn't change.
Yeah, the hourly rate is the same, it's the hours that we've increased.
Yeah.
And this is what they asked for.
Okay.
Okay. Municipal court.
Do they fall underneath vacation policy also?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that's our other full-time person.
I mean, I was just, yeah, I was just, point of interest. Okay, next.
Municipal judge, payroll, there's an increase of, slight increase from 16,640 to 17,680. Payroll tax went up proportionately.
Yeah.
Court supplies and equipment, we lowered that from 5,000 to 1,000. I guess that, and that was based on what has been expended for that up to date. Utility data is the, the software that they use, or the program that they use for their court information.
Okay.
And that's an annual fee of 2160, and that was, that was the same last year, but it wasn't broken. Last year, it was just all glogged together in $5,000, and now it's, it's separated out. Court sync, that's another, that's for collections, right, Jackie? And magistration, we are not paying for, separately for magistration this year, so that's down to zero. Training, we have increased that from 1,500 to 2,000. So the total expenses there is 25,401. Questions? Building and grounds, okay, we're, we're, we put 14,000 in here. Our building and grounds expense up to date had been more than that this year, and that was partly due to, what was our major expense that we had this year?
The public works, was it, did we put in the building over there? Did that, was that included in that?
Oh, yeah, it was the pole barn.
Yeah.
That, that brought it up over what we had budgeted, and we figured we won't, won't be doing another pole gr, pole barn this year, and thank you for doing that, because I mean, incredible job. It's, it's helped so much. But, so we just left the, the.
Oh, and the septic system.
Yeah, that was too.
Yeah.
That was another expense there.
Right, well, and then we put in mini, what do you call it, mini split, or air conditioner?
Yeah, that's small potatoes.
Right, but I mean, what adds up. You know.
David's happy.
Yeah, yeah, he is. Yeah, keep, keep David happy. Telephones, we're going from 1,000 a year to 1,700, which is really reasonable. Water, we left the same, cause we're right within budget there. Our electricity bill has gone up, so we raised that to 8,000. So that brings our total expenses down to 7, 720,366, which is what we have as income. Now, we, I am not at this point able to come up with what we will have at the end of the year, and what we'll put in here is any overage will go into the capital improvement fund like we've done in the past. We won't know that until later. We will be having separate budgets for each of our grant funds, and we'll have a separate budget for this ARPA funds unless we decide to put that into the general fund. Wow, that.
Yeah.
At a certain time of day, and I think there's, the sun starts shining in, but you see these? We've been getting these lately, you know, CD came up with these for a budget for our, each of our different, this is the ARPA funds. This would be our bond construction, this is the fund we have and how much the balance is and, and anticipated expenditure, and we'll have one of these for each of our funds. And we'll have, for the, this is, this is for the 11 million dollar grant, and what we anticipate spending, we, of course, we'll start out the year with less than the 11 million because we've already, they've done some draws for engineering and for grant administration on that, you know, with environmentals and the stuff that they've done so far. So we'll start out with less than the 11 and a half million, but the budget will look basically like this. We have to do one for every fund we have.
Yeah.
I don't have one of those.
Well, I know.
Did you get one?
No, CD printed these out, but what, we didn't do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, this basically, yeah, general fund.
All those other funds, they're, they're pretty much locked into what the grant is for, so I'm trying to figure out how much for general sales, how much for that form and all that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, cause I noticed that today when they were doing the budget at, at that cog, they, they said, you know, with funds, they anticipate, here's, here's how much we anticipate coming in, and we, you know, like the 11 and a half million, we'll put, that, we're spending all of it now. We probably, it probably won't be finished next year, so, but, that's what we do is, you know.
Yeah, we've been raked over coals for not putting all the expenses down, so now we have to put them all down.
Yep.
So.
It's a learning experience.
So the, the capital expenditure for, for the, the stuff for the road crew, I've looked and looked, I can't find it in here. This is the actual from last month? Did you, maybe I'm just, I need to get my prescription changed.
There's a problem with it.
My prescription?
No.
Huh?
Right here. They didn't put a budget number in here. So we have spent.
Oh, that's the 53,000 there, okay. Cause you were talking 65, and I was looking at our 63, and I was looking for that.
Well, yeah. She said 67.
66 something.
She said 67.
And we were wrong.
And we had 112 in there. We spent this amount of money, and there's another 4,500 that come out, so there's 53, 500 left at 112.
Okay, all right.
Me and, me and the city administrator had a long discussion.
Oh.
And we figured out where the mistakes were. Hey, we all make them, right?
Sure.
Okay, I, we don't, this is just workshop, we don't make any motions.
No decisions?
No decisions, is everybody? Yeah, deadline, deadline for adopting is the 29th of September, for the, both the budget and the tax rate, right?
Has to be voted on, yes.
At the latest, the 29th of September.
To the existing budget.
Yep.
There's the timeframes, it has to be published in a newspaper and on our website now. Thank goodness for Holly taking care of things for us on that. That makes it a lot easier, folks, I really, it does. Whenever we have something that has to be posted to the, the website, and there's more and more and more of that being required by the state.
And Holly puts it on immediately, cause it's done in-house now. See, before, we had to send it off to Lisa, and she did a great job, but if she was out of town or were busy or whatever, it might not happen that day, it might happen till the next day, and right now, it's happening instantly. Makes a big difference.
Now, the guidelines say that the mayor, in order for the timeframes to take place like they are required, from the public notice to the time for the public hearing on the budget, and the time for it to be adopted, the mayor's going to have to submit to the city secretary the proposed budget in a formal, in a formal version of what the council has discussed tonight. That then will be what is presented at the public hearing, and after that, the council can make any adjustments or changes, and that is what will be voted on by the 28th. So there's, TML's given us a guideline.
Oh, yeah.
That says the dates, absolute last date that we can do with this or whatever.
And CD's the one that really keeps all that, keeps track of all of that. That's under his, his umbrella as administrator, right?
Thank you, Claude.
Treasure.
So, so when do we have to have this public hearing? So, so when do we have to have this public hearing?
It is 10 days or further after the mayor presents her formal proposed budget. It has to be after 10 days that it's published, and we'll put that on the website.
September 15th is our next city council meeting. Do we have to have a meeting prior to that in order to do this?
I didn't pull that.
We'll have to get the calendar out and really look at exactly when we have to have our publication in the paper, when we have to have our public hearing, when we have to do all that stuff. And it's just, it's very defined.
But at this point, the next meeting is the 15th of September, so.
And that's two weeks before the 29th.
Yeah.
So.
Let's see, you'll have to present it on the 20th, if you'll give me just a moment, I can get the paperwork.
Now, we're still keeping the 65 exemption?
Read your text.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to go.
You're an important man, right?
Change that whole thing. Every, all the calculations that Lynette did are based on that. Cause we didn't ask for any changes this year.
Good. So, no new revenue, is what you're saying?
No, he, he was asking if the over 65 exemption is still on there, and yes, you know, once you've done it, unless you, you know, vote to undo it.
I think that's a big deal, it should, it never was the money, it was the principle.
Principle.
Right.
So.
And so that's in place, that's no problem. And I'll be getting the formal thing out as soon as, well, we'll, we'll.
Are we still rolling, we're still on, still in council?
We haven't adjourned yet.
No, I'll just stretch it.
Huh?
I'll just stretch it.
Oh, we thought you were leaving the room? No, John, you can't leave yet.
Monday, August the 29th, the last day for the budget officer to file the proposed budget with the municipal clerk if the city wants, plans to wait until September the 29th to adopt the tax rate. Difference between budget and tax rate gets kind of confusing. The last date that we can publish the notice of the budget hearing, I have written in that I need to send the notice to the paper by September the 9th in order for it to be published, come out on September the 15th. City council will be holding a record vote approving the proposed tax rate at the council meeting on the 15th. And then the notice, it'll go to the website for the tax rate public hearing, which we're not gonna have to have, but we will be posting the proposed tax rate on the website, and that goes out September the 20th. And the last date to publish the notice of the tax rate hearing would be September the 24th, well, we got that covered. The hearing and adopting the budget by September the 28th, and hearing and adopting the tax rate also September the 20, 29th, rather. Last date for our hearing on the budget, the hearing must be after the 15th day, after the 15th day, after the proposed budget is filed with county, municipal clerk, and at that point, the council will have to take some action on the budget. So, let's see.
So the public hearing has to be 15 days after I submit the proposed budget?
Yes, and that's where it goes back to the.
Well, could that be the council meeting?
Timeframe, the, my publication date can't be later than the 10th day before the budget hearing.
Okay, we'll figure all that out.
Well, yeah, I've written down those, those deadlines that I've got to meet, need to send the notice on September the 9th on when the budget hearing is going to be, so that it'll come out in the September 15th paper. That's figuring that the hearing is going to be on September the 28th.
I, I do have a question, though. Our budget for 2022 was 755,000, and the one for '23 is 720,000.
We had a carryover, didn't we?
Pardon? We may have, we may have.
We always have an unbalanced budget because our, the money that we end up with this year will go into the capital expenditure.
The budget for last year was 671,930.
Where'd this, six what?
671,930.
Where did the 755 come from? Was that a, that was an 80 something thousand dollar carryover?
No, I think that what that was.
The capital expense account?
Yeah.
Would you say it was?
671,930.
And we had 114.
That's 83,000, yeah, that was the number, that was a carryover.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I do have last year's budget folder here, and this year's.
This is, the actual is on what you showed me, told me to look at tonight, so.
All right.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
All right. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, mayor.
We are adjourned at.